Please rise. Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, this meeting noticed to be out there for press on April 14, 2021, and then will be advertised in the out there for press issue on April 19, 2021. All of this, our clerks and capture and overall within the district district have been really notified and requirements of the posting from the as of May as of April 20, 2021. Mrs. Scott, has any changes?
Yes, Mr. President, there was two additional items that were added prior to the board going executive session. The first is in box number three, in addition to the harassment intimidation of building court, the board also discussed student discipline matters. And the box number seven, pending or anticipated litigation, the board to discuss issues, possible litigation issues surrounding the anticipated referendum.
Thank you. Now have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11 meeting. This is your second discussion. Discussion, roll ball please. Mrs. Gabriella.
Yes.
Mrs. Digley.
Yes.
Mr. Masser. Mrs. Pennelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
State.
Mr. Burizi.
Yes.
Mr. Bruce.
Yes.
Communications are filing. We grant the Board of Education Secretary. We're going to have our superintendent report, Dr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So in a few moments, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Voice for the formal budget presentation, but a number of important updates before I do that. So I think first and foremost, the state Cali report came out this morning. And for the first time, I believe in months and months and months, the entire state of New Jersey is in the orange and yellow designation, which is moderate risk. So that's a positive sign in terms of positivity rate of COVID. And obviously, I believe the numbers from the governor's office are that there's somewhere around 6 million doses so far of the vaccine that have been administered. For us as a, as a school district, you know, I would say a conservative estimate at this point in time is that somewhere around 85% of our staff are vaccinated. We did make a center state clinic available to students who, whose parents wanted the vaccine. And we had somewhere around 360 students take advantage of that. We are now a few weeks into five days with students who wish to return to the building for five days, all allowed to come into the building. We are running at approximately 60% of the student body actually in the building. There's still approximately 40% of our students who are electing the, to maintain the remote option. One of the things that we've been clear about to both the Department of Education, governors, staffers, and our local legislators is that we really need some specific guidance around what that remote option might look like next year. Because even though the governor came out very strongly and said he wants in person instruction for all schools, he then subsequently stated that there might be some exceptions to that. And the exceptions is where the difficulty always lies in terms of planning. For school districts at this point in time, we've already built, you know, the budget presentations tonight, that's built around our staffing for next school year, that's complete at this point in time. And so if there's any changes to that, it's a very difficult process to implement some of the programs that we might need to implement, not melting. And so that's, that's been a big ask over the, over the past several weeks at this point in time, and we still are awaiting answers. Obviously, this is, you know, we're into April, we're moving into that celebratory time of year, particularly for our seniors with proms and graduation, or juniors as well with the proms. And I'm sure folks noticed that the governor did lift some restrictions on indoor gatherings, capped at 50% of maximum 250, as well as outdoor gatherings. So we, we had already had multiple plans for our proms, you know, the only, the only real change in terms of the venues that we're going to be attending is, is, is really just making sure that we follow the protocols. We're dancing, that has now been allowed. But we, yeah, they can dance as long as they're socially distanced with masks on. So that will be interesting. However, I, I do think that, you know, the venues that we're working with across the six high schools all have outdoor areas, multiple rooms that students can be divided in and are doing, you know, sort of serving the dinner. We've already actually had one junior prom, went off without a hitch. So we, we felt confident from the start, even, even prior to the lifting of the restrictions that will occur on, on May 10. And as far as graduation at this point in time, you know, we're, you know, we're planning an outdoor ceremony with all of our students. And we'll see what the guidance looks like as we move through the, as we move through the school, the remainder of the school year for that specific celebration. But we feel very confident we're going to be able to implement an event that is befitting of our seniors and as close to absolutely normal as, as possible. And then just another quick note before I segue into some of my, my comments on the budget, you know, the faculty and staff, and Rebecca Paul Castro put together a thank you video to the staff at Center State Hospital, who have been really terrific partners through all of this. And it wasn't just the vaccinations, but it was also being really embedded in our restart recovery process and providing us with medical guidance all the way through and making their resources available to us from, you know, from March of 2020 on. And so we put together that video and I shared with the board and it's up on our website. Mr. Griffin called yesterday and thanked us, said, no pun intended, it was like a shot in the arm to some folks, so. Well, and before I turn it over to Mr. Voice, a couple, a couple of comments on where our original high school district stands in terms of our budget process and in terms of some of the other, the other factors that, you know, we're facing, we're facing as a school district. So from a, from a purely financial standpoint, COVID has actually benefited us financially because it is, in a couple ways, both in the money that was saved at the end of last year and the federal funds that are coming this year has offset some of the reductions that are coming through Senate Bill Two. And S2, anybody who follows any of our social media platforms or our advocacy groups that are noted on our website knows that Senate Bill Two was passed a few years back at this point in time. The intent of the bill was to provide funding to districts that had not received the funding commensurate with their population growth over a period of time. It's based on the SFRA, School Funding Reform Act. And the SFRA is something that Mr. Voice and I, and the implementation of it is something that both of us have, have provided testimony, testimony for, to our legislators and to Senate and the Assembly, because simply the, the formula doesn't, doesn't align. And what I mean by that is our, the determination of our ability to pay as a regional area has far outstripped the property values in our region. And I think at the, the last time we testified, and I'm cherry picking a little bit here, was, you know, we looked at from 2012 to 2017 or somewhere thereabouts. And our real property growth in the region had been about 9%, right Sean, somewhere around there when we looked at it. And the states, it had grown by, our, so our property value grew about 9%, but the state's determination of our ability to pay had grown by over 50%. So something is funky with the formula. We're obviously part of a multi district lawsuit with the state. We've secured the algorithm at this point. We actually have an expert now taking apart the, the DOE's algorithm because they gave it to us in long form after many an over request. But long story short, where we are with S2 for this, for our school system, we are in the unique position of being an under adequacy district, which means that we, our funding is not at the level that the state says it should be in order to meet the needs of our students, while we were simultaneously being cut a total of $30 million over a seven year period. Our entire budget is approximately, was approximately $200 million. So you can imagine over a seven year period, that's a fifth of our budget that is being washed away. We are pushing hard on multiple avenues to bring this to the attention of the governor and our local legislators and our folks who have supported us two locally as well. And that has brought us with a number of partners, the support our students group, which is a, a grouping of about 105 school districts from across the state that are facing losses under S2 have come together. We had a legislative day a few weeks back and we generated about 4,000 letters to our elected officials, making the case, asking for some simple things. One, pause the reduction, especially in the middle of a pandemic. Because to open our doors in October, which we did, which there are apparently still about 50 districts in the state that haven't, you know, we encumbered quite a bit of additional costs to do that, from a staffing perspective, from a substitute perspective. And so that's been, that's been a difficult road. And one of the, one of the conversations that is being shut down quickly, you know, at the state level is that the federal funds that are now flowing through New Jersey, which is to the tune of billions, districts that have remained closed are not encumbering the same expenses that those of us who opened are. It's a simple, it's energy, it's additional staff, it's transportation, all of those costs are being offset. Yet, the way that the federal dollars are flowing is simply by Title I allocation. So the percentage of students that receive free and/or reduced lunch in your district is how the, the dollars flow. Makes no distinction between whether your school district's been opened or closed. We are working with the Ed Law Center that at this point in time, we think it's, it's unconscionable that the state of New Jersey would be receiving over a billion dollars in aid for K-12 education and is simultaneously continuing to cut over 100 districts in the state during that pandemic. We're going to continue to push that issue. We're going to continue to rail against S2, going to continue to put out literature that clearly spells out what S2 means for this district. We're going to continue to meet with our local legislators to share in what that impact looks like and are asked to the, to the governor's office at this point in time because the budget's in his hands ultimately, is a pause to reductions and actually reexamining the funding formula, which has never been funded other than the very first year. So that's what, 2008 or so Sean, right?
Right, 08.
Yeah, 08, 09. So you know, we're, we're up over 15 years since they've even looked at this formula. And yet, real decisions are being made. S2, very similar to Chapter 44, was legislation that was rushed through and has had, you know, cataclysmic results for some of us. And I don't believe the intent was to fund some children at the expense of others in the state of New Jersey. And so our S2 context is, is a loss of almost $7 million this year. Sean will go through the COVID impact and how that will mask some of that. So this, this year's budget story is a, a neutral story in terms of reductions, but that's purely because COVID occurred. And that's the, that's the long and short of it. And I will say before, you know, the way our, the way our, our budget is, is done at the state level, every year we have eight communities. And those eight communities sort of fluctuate. Oftentimes, there's, there's sharp increases and sharp decreases and it, it in many ways depends on the elementary enrollment, Sean will go through that a little bit. And I know that one of the outliers this year is Manalapan, the township of Manalapan. And it's actually explained by a sort of dramatic decrease in the K8 enrollment that we have to navigate because that pushes the burden to the high school. And so Sean has a slide that illustrates that over time. But I think that it's important to note that over a, our communities have gone up and down over the years and there's a lot of external factors that are beyond our control in terms of what that looks like from a, from a funding process. And so Sean, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to dig into the nitty gritty on all of that and move forward with the budget presentation.
Thanks, Sean. And, you know, really in your comments about S2 and legislative impact on the funding that the district receives is, it's more or less at the center of change that has caused our financial position to evolve into where we stand today. So it's, it's important, Trish, if you could change your slide. So what's, what's important about tonight's presentation? What are the things that we want to address? And one of them is districts have a tendency to be myopic at this time of year, right? So to look at the annual budget and for one year, where, where our view, we need to really take a broader view of, of what funding options are available to us and also a longer view because S2 and the lack of state aid, decreasing state aid is going to continue for three more years after this budget. So we'll, we'll need to be aware of that. We also want to integrate our annual operating budget thinking into the capital planning and understand how options have dissipated for us to be able to handle some very critical and urgent capital project needs, which we'll be incorporating into this presentation. And that culminates in two action points for tonight's agenda. One is the adoption of the annual budget for next year, and the other is the endorsement and support to initiate a referendum for November 2021. But first things first, let's, let's talk about the annual school budget. On the screen, you'll see here are the headlines of the budget, if you will. It's, it's stabilized this year and as, as mentioned, there are, there's some unique non-recurring benefits that have allowed that to happen. So the state cuts continue under Senate Bill Two, and our property tax increase is at 2%. Now that's, that's a capped number. Our property tax increase at 2% is 2.8 million and we're losing 6.7 million in state aid. So the district is not able to backfill those losses in revenue quick enough under an independent law on a cap on a tax levy. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And pandemic related savings has helped bolster our current budget position. That's a non-recurring revenue, all right? So we need to be aware and attentive to the structural integrity of our annual budgets and how we design our cap going forward. On the expenditure side, the highlights of that are, the lowlights of that is that we have dropped now to 4.8 million below the adequacy benchmark. So what that is, is, is the state's formulas determination of what amount of money is necessary to provide an adequate, a thorough and efficient education. What is an adequate amount of money to accomplish that? So we are falling below that and we think that's a, you know, a piece of the S2 legislation that wasn't fully contemplated when it was initiated three years ago. But we'll, we'll bring that into focus as we people walk also. Our state spending metrics speak to our efficiency, we'll take a look at that. It's the cost per pupil calculation that uses audited information, it's compiled by the state grouped into sibling type districts for comparative purposes. We've always carried very well with that, and we continue to. And also stimulus funds. So the, the current version of stimulus fund, the current ground of stimulus funds has allocated to Freehold Regional $2.2 million. And what we have decided to do with that is to dedicate it to the full implementation of a one-to-one platform. It's a non-recurring revenue with a non-recurring expense, so that makes sense. And it's also something that, as we navigated through the pandemic, became clear that we need to, you know, have that platform, that common platform in place for our students. So there's a dedication of that there. Trish, if you will. So let's take a look, I'll give you a moment to look at the revenue screen, the revenue breakdown for our general fund. So relatively flat general fund budget. I'd like to touch base on two things and then go a little deeper into that, the slides that follow. As I mentioned, increasing the tax levy is at 2%. And this, what will be our fourth year in seven year phase outs of funding of state aid, the hit is $6.7 million. Now, normally, that would be a devastating cut, but we are able to stake that off for just one year. And the reason is, if you look at fund balance there, we're able to increase the amount of surplus that we've put towards this budget. The savings that Dr. Sampson referred to in his opening comments regarding COVID, what the district has decided to do is to split that into both short-term benefit through comp balance and supporting this year's annual budget. And also with a longer view, a deposit into our capital reserve. A capital reserve is to parallel to what we all have at home, is essentially a savings account with the funds dedicated to facilities. So we were able to put $5 million from last year's last few months of benefit from the pandemic towards that. And the current year, which is far less, it's a longer time, but it's less we were able to use to supplement our fund balance appropriated and support this current year's budget. So we're remaining whole in that, in that aspect. I'll also make mention of participation fees, which for the year that we're currently in, it was planned to implement, but with, with the pandemic, it's not something that we're able to do in any kind of meaningful way. So we abandoned that for the current year. We're also able to hold it off for next year. But certainly as our financial budget, as our, as our annual budgets move on over time, we're going to be in less and less of a position to be able to hold off changes of that nature. So I'll also, my final comment on this is debt service fund. Take notice that the debt service fund is zero. So with, you know, debt service fund is, the purpose of that is to pay off long-term debt. The last referendum, successful referendum that the district had was some 20 years ago. And it's issuing of bonds to do Coltsnet High School, additions to other schools. And obviously, as we would at home, some purchase of a scale of that nature not fitting into your annual budget, something that's similar to a mortgage, right? So you pay it off over 20 years. So referendums are periodic, they're not, they don't happen every handful of years. Our last one was more than 20 years ago. And last year, we made our final amen on that. And that was really our jumping off point for the two referendums that have been offered since, one in October 2018, one in November 2019, both of which were unsuccessful. So it was to coordinate new debt with expiring debt and therefore keep the tax rate steady. So we're in a period here now where there is no debt service fund and no tax levy associated with that. So I just wanted to note that as well. Trish, if you would. So state funding, right? So this is one of the important takeaways here. Our budget, which is, for sake of discussion, I'll use round numbers, a $200 million budget in as of, prior to the implementation of S2, we received about $50 million from the state in state aid. So 25% of our budget was supported by state funding. At the end of S2, that $50 million will go down to $20 million, right? So it's fading out over time, but it's compounding too. So it's, you know, $5 million, $6 million, $6 million, and they're all in addition to, in addition to, to bring us down to where we should be. Now, the, the interesting part of this is the state is not saying that we spend too much. In fact, we're actually under what they say we should be spending. Their message is, you're not taxing enough. You have a greater ability to pay for your own education. So your tax rate should be higher. And this goes to, S2 is a supplement to the School Funding Reform Act, the funding reformer that's been in place since 2008, 2009. And here's the gist of it. Here's how it works. It's, it's fairly straightforward and it makes a lot of sense. And I am supportive of the approach that they're using for it. But it's a two-step process. The first is to quantify student needs, right? And then use that, poured through the actual demographics on a district by district basis to arrive at an adequacy budget, right? So how much should this district need to provide a thorough and efficient education? And it's different for each district because no district has the exact same enrollment, right? So same cost model applied to the district specific population, their characteristics and the costs associated with them to come to that district unique number. So that's the first step the SFRA takes. The second is, okay, how are we going to pay for it? And there are approaches that local communities, you go first through property taxes. So in order to do that, they measure a community's ability to pay for their own education. They use two wealth indicators, property value and income. And then they translate that into ability to pay. That's first off in needing the adequacy budget dollar now. Now, they, the, the method the state uses to translate those two wealth indicators into ability to pay has a multiplier or factor in there which changes year over year. And we'll look at the impact of that. But back to the overall design, local fair share, local community, property tax, that goes first and whatever's left in order to get up to adequacy, the state picks up through state aid. Anything that the district spends above that adequacy, the position of the state in the funding formula is you're entirely on your own on that community. We won't consider that for funding, for state funding. So that's the overall design concept of what should it cost, then how are we going to pay for it, community first. Trish, if you could move to the next slide. Take a moment to, to get familiar with this. It's tax levy on one side, state aid on the other. The red lines are what the funding formula calls for, the green lines are what has actually happened. So as Dr. Sampson mentioned in his opening comments, there is a, a change in the level in the measure of in the measure of the community's ability to pay that is, does not align with what the actual changes in those two wealth indicators are. And it's been different each year. It's very difficult to predict, and you can see in the tax levy graph, according to the state's calculations for funding the adequacy budget, they believe that the district's tax levy should be where the red line is. And where it's not, it's at the green line. And the corresponding reduction in state aid on the other side, all right? So it's, S2 serves to shift funding, existing funding, from districts that are measured like this to districts that have far less ability to pay, far less local fair share. And it does that over a seven-year period. Interestingly, the, not interestingly, but importantly, the whole S2 and the SFRA is independent of a separate law that limits an increase on the tax levy to 2%. So we cannot, we could not comply with this even if we were inclined to raise taxes by $30 million, which I can say confidently that we are not. But the Tax CAC law prohibits districts from moving as S2 is designing districts to move. Consequently, we are not achieving the amount of, an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. So we are, as Chuck said, we are below adequacy, right? Which is, our trend of adequacy is going down. Last year, we were $1.5 million below adequacy, this year we're $4.8 million below adequacy, and that trend's going to continue. It's going to continue throughout the full implementation of S2, which has three years remaining. Next year, it's targeted at about the same level of reduction as this year, and then the years, the two years following that goes down to maybe $4 million and then $2 million. But again, they're all compounding on each other. At the end of the day, our state aid will be approximately $20 million instead of $50 million. But that is really the core issue that has set us on the path that we find ourselves on today, right? Because as you all know, the mechanics of it might be interesting if you're interested in that kind of stuff, but conceptually, the less money you have coming in, the less money you'll have available to do other things, right? And so that manifests itself in a couple of different ways, and I think it's worth our time to touch in on, touch base on all of those things, so that we understand the impact of that as it stands right now. So up here, we have property tax changes as a result of the 2% increase in the tax levy. And I want to spend just a moment talking about how the district's tax levy is allocated among the eight municipalities that contribute to. Two, and the state, the state performs that calculation, determines the calculation, imposes on the district to comply. We don't have, it's not something that we develop internally. So, and that calculation is used only for what we're talking about here tonight, the allocation of that tax rate. So here's how they do it. They split each municipality's property value, equalized value, by the percentage of elementary students and high school students. So if there is changes in enrollment at either levy, it changes that percentage split and therefore changes the impact it has on the allocation of Freehold Regional's tax levy. So those are the factors, school age enrollment, equalized value. So the high school side of that, for each of the eight municipalities, is added up, and then your specific municipality's percentage of that total is your percentage share of the levy. Now, because of shifts in a number of factors and in all or some of the communities, it's hard to impact, to isolate the impact of it. We're going to drill down on one example, just so that you can have a sense of it, but this methodology is abrupt, it's volatile, it's something that we have, that with legislators about, to come up with a way to smooth those edges some. Rolling three-year average, something like that, that may cause not such abrupt changes each year, but five. Let's look back at over five years per municipality. And you can see just by viewing the graph there, there, for each municipality, there are up, there are down, there are up, there are down, and that can happen for things that may be happening in their municipality or in ours. That causes the percentage share to change. So let's go down even further and look at Manalapan, who's seen the highest percentage increase this year, and look at their history, up and down. For this year, here's what's impacted Manalapan. The elementary school enrollment dropped by 5.5%. That was a large drop for Manalapan compared to other districts or other municipalities. It was a considerable drop. The high school enrollment only drops 0.8%, right? So the drop in elementary is far more than the drop in high school, which means that when they're splitting the equalized value of the community, more of that percentage is pushed into the high school column, okay? And because it moves into the high school column, it then becomes part of the calculation to allocate the remaining levy. So for just that reason, there's been a shift in the percentage share of the levy that Manalapan has seen. Now, that could reverse itself next year. Even if the municipality is exactly the same as they were the year before, they're going to see changes because there are changes happening in the other municipalities that's causing their high school piece of equalized valuation to change, and therefore their percentage share. So it's, it's not something that can be easily isolated to one municipality, one of the variables in that municipality. For this year, it actually is evident that the majority of that impact is because of the drop in elementary enrollment. Everybody feeling comfortable with that explanation or with understanding how that process works? Or any questions on how that moves? Okay. All right, thank you. Trish, if you move to the next slide. So on the appropriation side, as I had mentioned earlier, we stabilized our operation for the time being, and, but I did want to include this to show just where, what categories that money is falling into. So it's essentially a 60-40 split in direct instruction versus support services, administration, transportation, facilities in those areas. Something that I'd like to just emphasize while we're here is that the capital piece, which you can barely even see, but you can see the word capital and 0.1%, and that's really for equipment. The annual budget is one of the areas that you can raise funding to do capital projects, large-scale capital projects, like roof replacings, that type of thing. There are three areas. Another area is a referendum, which is a separate and independent, independent from the annual operation, annual budget, independent of that is a separate quote, and it's funded with new dollars. The third is capital reserves, which I touched on earlier. Capital reserves can only be funded through the annual budget. So really, the annual budget and a referendum are the only two opportunities to fund, to accumulate funds to pay for big-ticket facility improvements. Because S2 has cut our revenue, as you would imagine, our budgets become tighter and tighter, and the amount lapsing at the end of any given year, which would normally be our opportunity to deposit some money into our fund, into our facility reserves, we haven't been able to do that because we need all of those dollars in order to support, to put towards the next budget we build. Both of those areas have been severely impacted by S2. There was a time here in this budget, prior to S2, just prior to S2, where the district would build in a certain level of financial assets in each annual budget to do some big-ticket facility projects. Over a 10-year period of time, this district put close to $10 million towards roofing and paving alone. But the opportunity to do that within an annual budget, an annual operation, has been diminished to a point that is no longer viable, which is why in tonight's presentation, we're shifting some of the most critical and urgent needs to a very limited scope referendum that we're going to be putting before the community on November 2nd. So for appropriations, as revenues decline, the appropriations contract, our tolerance for assuming risk has gone up, and we've reached really the end of the road in that option, which is why we are now moving and proposing a referendum going forward. Trish, next slide. So I, as I mentioned earlier, the spending metric that's most commonly used by the state, and in a comparable way, is the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spend. So what we did here was, we just, all of the different groupings, we took what's the average of all of the districts in that particular grouping, and compared it to Freehold Regional directly. Next to Freehold Regional, the gray are just all of the high school districts in the state. There are 31 high school districts in the state, and you can see how we match up to those. So our spending, we fare very well in this measure. We have the economy of scale to do that, having 10,000 high school students, but more importantly than the economics of it, which makes a lot of sense, it affords us the opportunity to offer programs because there's a critical mass of student interest, whereas in smaller districts, there may not be enough students for that particular interest to support a program of the nature that we have here with a dozen magnitude programs that we have. So I think that's the more important benefit of having the scale of high school students that we have. So that concludes the annual budget portion of this, and I'm going to shift into the capital referendum portion of it. So we're at a great point that after failing two referendums, one in '18 and one in '19, we've really pulled back and shown a great amount of restraint on what we're going to put forward for the community and ask for their support. The process for that, for a November election, is action tonight to endorse the project that gets things in motion. Then at the August board meeting, it would be to finalize the bond question for the November election. It's worth noting that the, this process from now until August is to submit applications for New Jersey Department of Education Office of School Facility Approve. So the state reviews the plans. Now, it's pretty straightforward plans that we have for roofing and paving, there's nothing complex about that, and it's also the third time that we've put this particular scope work down to the state for review. The state, though, is something that we don't have direct control over, so we are aware of the timeline, because we need to make that, very aware of timelines as well. That's something we'll be keeping you all posted on as the months pass. Thank you, Trish. So the next slide here, here's the scope work that we're proposing to include in the referendum. $14,460,000 is the number, and this comprises the most urgent areas of roofing and paving, but we're calling priority one. Priority two are areas of work that will need to be addressed, we'll come do three to five years from now. So in designing an overall sort of approach to how we're going to fund this, we were inclined to be very specific about the things that are the most urgent needs and put those up there, while at the same time putting in place some mechanism to generate funding that can be accumulated to address the second tier of priorities, priority two here for roofing and paving. So in doing so, identifying that, we looked at solar options, and we looked at those for consideration within the referendum or through what's called a power purchase agreement, which is another option for it that doesn't need upfront cost, so we also looked at that. Either way we're doing, either way we approach that, it does generate economic benefit, and that economic benefit will be dedicated to depositing into our facility-related reserves in order to accumulate money to fund projects down the road, three to five years, and other areas of our facilities that need improvement as well along the way. Ultimately, we decided to not include solar in the referendum and to pursue the PPA aspect of it because we wanted to really be pinpoint accurate and very reasonable in what we put forward and if the community's going. So to walk us through some of that process, the assessment process, and the scope work, Ted Hopkins from our architect group is here to touch base on some of that for us. Ted, if you would.
Ted. You see if you can pick up Ted's mic, please. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Sean. Wanted to quickly go through what we did, process, share our own view, but anyway, from the public. What we did, we did not, it's very important to note, we did not just take the whole referendum information and just peel that out and start with that and go from there and just, you know, resubmit it. On the morning of March 3rd, we met with Pat Brownness and Matt in their offices, and kind of information, we went through a process, I think was kind of, give it a fresh look. One thing about paving and roofing is they change very quickly, or they have the ability to change very quickly because they're exposed to the weather constantly. So those things can and do change rhythmically. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, from a year and a half ago, when the referendum, or two, I guess, ago, we'd take a fresh look at it and make sure that we got warranty information correct on roofing and really give that a fresh look. So on March 3rd, we walked all of the roofs of every building, all six buildings in the district, and again, having that information, double-checked and made sure the warranties were correct and accurate, but did not use just that as the basis of whether something was good or bad. I've said this to you before, I'll say it again, just because it's new doesn't mean it's good, just because it's old doesn't mean it's bad. Pat and I agreed with that, and we wanted to take a fresh look. Having done that, you look at the drawing that you have, you basically broke things into three categories. The white category was roofs, they're doing great, they're under warranty, and there's really no reason at this point to include those in the referendum. The red areas were areas that were definitely finding some leakage, they're not performing well, most likely they are out of warranty, although there are some slight tweaks to that, again, old, new kind of thing. So we wanted to take a look at it, make sure that we assessed it exactly how it should be assessed, not by just looking at the warranty. So the red areas were areas, again, not performing well, leaks are being found on a regular basis, and strong consideration. The yellow areas were areas that were under warranty, perhaps coming to the end of their warranty, or areas that... or areas that had already approached their warranty and passed, but were performing well. Areas that were not seeing any kind of leakage of any kind and really performing as good as it could be given the parameters and the year of their license. So I've like broken into those three categories. The red then became priority one, the yellow became priority two. And again, over the years, as he said, three to five years, we keep an eye on those roofs. They may develop more quickly than others, get into from good to bad. But at this point in time, we didn't find any reason to include those in the referendum. The white areas in particular might have, you know, we just did them for you. They might have an expiration of 2036. So they're recently done. No reason to be bringing those into the process at this time. So again, we walked every roof and made that assessment at each of the six facilities. And this is what we came up with. We believe that these are the highest priority in the red areas. The yellow areas, again, we keep an eye on over the years, make sure they don't change radically, make some slight adjustments to that if we need to. And the white areas, we'll address that much further down the road. A week later, we went out and did the savings act thing for the paving. Now, again, warranties are in play here, but they do have longevities. And a normal longevity, but that doesn't mean that that isn't exactly what it should be. Paving should last in the neighborhood of 15 to 25 years, depending on how much, how many times the buses or cars roll over. I mean, and sometimes it does, you can take that. But a normal lifespan is 20 years. So having some of that knowledge, again, we look for severe cracking. We look for what we call alligatoring, and that means that there's a soft spot underneath it there that breaks the asphalt, it's in smaller areas, maybe as big as my hand, and it's continuous. So it's not a crack in the ear in nature, or even spigot in nature. It's an area that has severe distress. And the stone and the strata, we'll call it dirt, flow underneath that is not performing, it's getting soft. There may be areas of compaction really bad, areas that are getting wet. So, and that's a very natural thing, it's gonna happen over time. Again, we divided that into two. The red areas being what you could think, the worst areas, severe cracking. What we're talking about here in the red is full reconstruction. What does that mean? That means I take everything down to the stone. I don't do a milling, which is basically taking the top coating off and putting asphalt back on top of it. We remove it down to the stone, give it a new base, and build it back up, pitch it properly, make sure that it's pitched properly to the drains that are on the perimeter, sometimes in the middle, and work it back to almost like it's absolutely brand-new. That brand-new should last, again, twenty, 25 years. If everything is working well, performing well, there are spots we would have to maybe take out a little bit more to make sure that we're hitting really good soil and getting really good compaction to about 95%. That's the number we're looking for when we do all the testing. The yellow areas are the areas that are doing okay. In this case, the yellow areas, and only three of the buildings, if you looked at the sheet that Sean put up there, were mostly dedicated, I believe, not towards the busing areas, where the buses maintain, they come in, they loop, they drop off kids, they pick kids up. So that, what I'm looking at there is Freehold Township High School. And again, the yellow areas, they're, the buses loop along the left side, and then across the front of the building. But the red areas were the worst areas. And again, we believe that is the area that should warranty, basically strip attention to it in a very short amount of time before deterioration anymore, causing potholes, causing areas where, you know, cars could be damaged in some way, shape, or form. See, it's that like that, but I could get to that. And then we'll take a look at the yellow over time and make sure that we can maybe spot, address those things. And again, those things will come to the end of their life as well. Keep an eye on it over time. Solar. We did look at both ways of addressing this. With the start from Dr. Sampson, remember the first thing you may have with him before we went out, we wanted to take a look at solar and what the benefits could be to the district. We did a recent project, referendum project, if you will, with Monmouth Regional High School. We merely wanted to bring those ideas to the table and see if it worked. And just finishing that project, we are about ready to flip the switch, which is very exciting. It's about 600 K W system at Monmouth Regional High School. We understand the risks that are involved with the SREC program, with the TREC program that people are being transferred into, and then hopefully onto the new SREC program that follows. But we certainly understand that a PPA is certainly a great benefit as you create that energy for your building. It's not a direct energy for the building, but certainly it generates a significant amount of electricity that gets sent back into the grid and you obviously are the benefit. Each building is the benefit of that. So while we looked at it, and wanted to make sure we presented both options, had many conversations with Sean about this, especially over the last week or so. And good conversations. And want to make sure that, again, we offered that as an option. We do PPAs all the time. We're doing a PPA right now for Robbinsville. We're doing other PPAs, my partner's doing others as well. We're about ready to start a PPA down here at some point. They all vary, they all have different parameters to them. None of them are the same. But I believe that at least going down the road and reviewing this is a positive thing. Please note, timing is also important as well. I think the PPA allows the roofs to be done in the areas where you saw white and red. Understanding that the red areas could be done over time, and the PPA would use those roofs, as well as the white roofs, which has a longevity as well, and use those areas for a PPA. And we think that's a significant amount at each of the schools, some a little bit more, some a little bit less. And certainly able to take the advantages of that system. After 15 years, as I'm sure you know, you have the opportunity to buy the system, or to have them remove it, start all over again, however you want. That's a decision that's 15, 15 years down the road from the implementation of that system. So again, I think it is important that you look at those. Certainly respect the decision that is made to perhaps look at the PPA once the roofs are done, and I think that's a wise decision.
Thanks, Ted. You know, with the solar component of this, and I think the important piece of that for tonight is that it's part of systemic mechanism to accumulate funds for the yellow areas and other projects, tennis courts and the like, that the district has. It fits that the structural design of our finances beyond the view of any one-hands annual budget. And it's, it's, you know, things like this, I think, are essential to be in place as we move forward under the remainder of S2 and at most S2 at the lowest levels of funding that we're aiming to get. So I'll turn to the board. First of all, we have Ted at the mic. Roofing, paving, questions? Any additional questions that you had?
Hi, Ted. Sorry, Ted, I think you just answered my question.
Sure.
You can put solar on the white. Of course, like the reds would be parrot roofs, of course. But the roofs are not going to be repaired, by the way, for the referendum. They could be solar also, right?
Absolutely. What we have done in some cases, and it's a great, great question. I appreciate the question. If there are some areas that we feel they need to have even a number seen on the roofs that are there, if, let's say it's EPDM, you can't do with a modified roof or another technique similar to that. Yes, is the answer. Those are good places to put roofs. We did that at Monmouth. We added an oversea in many areas that were older roofs, but still it almost lengthens the, in that case, they had EPDM. It lengthens the lifespan of the roofing. In that case, to mention the fact that you're going to put solar panels over top of that, which also protects it a little bit more.
So the sea protects the roof.
Correct, correct. So it really was a good benefit, and believe me, it was, we believe the minimal amount of money that is made up when you do the, in this case, you bought the system, that would pay for itself over a very short amount of time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ford, any other questions for Ted? Ted, thank you for all of your work and giving us what we need to put forward a responsible referendum.
So how we can help you going forward?
Thank you, you guys really worked hard on it. I was part of the finance, the finance, the great, great job.
Phil and Pat was very helpful, and he was, they were both terrific. I would say that if he wasn't here, I'm glad he is.
He has our sound guy, right?
What's that?
We have our sound guy.
Ted.
Ted's referring to Alagrad, our director of facilities. That does an outstanding job here for us.
Thanks, Pat.
It's nice seeing you, it's great, thank you.
Thank you.
So for the annual school budget, this is the public hearing for the annual school budget. You know what? What it boils down to is how we're viewing that annual budget along with the referendum is just how our things, a broader, longer view of how our finances will evolve in the years to come, to the extent that we can predict legislative action and other influences, external influences. In, you know, advocating for state funding, we'll continue to do. The vigorous job has happened over the years led by our superintendent to very publicly, forcefully advocate for S2 changes. And we'll continue to do that. And also, where does a limited-scope referendum fit and all of that? That is the full package that we wanted to convey tonight. With regard to, well, for anything but the annual school budget, I'll start with the board with any questions. I'll then, I'll ask the community if there are any questions there. So, Ford, any comments, questions on the budget?
I would just like to make a comment. As it relates to Manalapin, Manalapin has seen a decrease in four of the past six years. In fact, in 2016, Manalapin's share decreased 3.7% and then decreased another 1.5% following year. Then 0.7% in 2019, and then another 1% decrease last year. While this year's increase seems to be jarring, the issue here, from what I can see, is really twofold. The first being the state's levy apportionment formula and Manalapin's 5.5% reduction in its elementary school enrollment. I think, and I thank you, Sean, and your team for creating a very responsible, streamlined, somewhat obscure budget. I think it's responsible. And while this year, Manalapin's increase is somewhat jarring, I'm hopeful that we can continue to trend with some future years of decreases.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Any other comments from the board?
I think we're going to count them today. This is the first time in five years, we've counted that's seen an increase. And I think it's also because the elementary went down. And again, there is, this is for some, I think, the best idea they have. I think we can take that seriously.
Yes, you know, the way the taxes apportion is wronged. There are too many variables, like the swing, it's lollying one way or the other. And we will continue to pursue a way to change that, to smooth out those elements if we can, into that formula. We have spoken to legislators about that and continue to do so.
Sean, just a couple of points that I'd like to make, and I think Mr. Weis and Mrs. Higley are on to it. You know, one of the issues with the declining enrollment, particularly at the K8, was the simple fact that private Catholic schools were not, were open in a very different way than public schools were in New Jersey in the fall. And a lot of these kindergartners and first graders and such that would have otherwise been enrolled, they chose to enroll their kids elsewhere. That's what happened in New Jersey. And so, you know, we're living with some of the impacts of that in certain communities. But I also just want to make a note, because I don't, I don't know if the general layperson would understand that comparative spending and just how unbelievable it is with the dollar figure that we're at. As a high school district, a regional district with 225 square miles and hundreds and hundreds of bus runs, dozens and dozens of athletic teams that utilize transportation as well, and a $7 million bill to the county vocational every year, we spend $3,000, more than, $3,000 less than the typical high school per student. It's, we spend less than ever. That is the only K8 with a lower spending per pupil than us. Our administrative costs are a fraction comparatively to high school districts. So by every financial metric, we are one of the most financially efficient districts in the entire state, not just the region, in the entire state. And to spend $3,500 less per pupil, we've managed to expand programs, you know, so we had the $500,000 grant from the Department of Ed and had built CTE pathways in three of our high schools over the past couple of years while we've been cutting millions. We expanded the International Baccalaureate Program here from Freehold Township here to Howe while we were cutting millions. And so, in the face of all of this, we've actually been able to manage our dollars, I think, in a prudent and fiscally responsible manner. And one of the things that you're not even talking about with the roofs and the HVAC work was the ESIP that we engaged in in 2012 and 2013 at no cost to the taxpayers for 20-plus million dollars of HVAC work that we upgraded some of our oldest buildings at that point in time. By every metric imaginable, we are one of the most financially efficient districts in the state, offering a comprehensive high school experience for students. When our dollar figure is that much lower, and all you have to do in the presentation, the typical regional high school district spends $18,926 per pupil. Freehold Regional High School district spends $15,513 per pupil. And we're almost $5 million under adequacy with the programs that we're doing. We figured it out. I think we've been very responsible to our communities in terms of what we've done over the years. We're going to go back out for a bare-bones referendum, and hopefully that will resonate with the community. Much like you have to redo your roof at a certain point in time and pave your driveway, we have those costs as well. What we can't have is, if we have to spend $10 million on that priority work, $14 million on the priority work, while we're also going to be cut millions, it's going to impact what we can do for kids. And that's the bottom, that's the bottom line here. We figured out a way to make it work thus far. We got a little bit lucky with the financial impact from COVID. We're certainly moving ahead with a clear plan of action. And Sean, you've been a big part of that, because you positioned us in a way from, you know, we've been together for almost 11 years now. And we were talking about what this looked like years ago and where we needed to go. And you set the district on a place to at least buy us time while we advocate for some legislative change. So that's where, that's where we are with this budget. So thank you.
Thank you. The options to handle the capital work is down to two. Annual budgets or referendum. So if not the referendum, then that work, which has that scale and positive in, finds its way into our annual budget process, displacing dollars that can be better used in other areas. The scope being offered- finds its way into our annual budget process, displacing dollars that can be better used in other areas. The scope being offered is critical and are critical in that you must have roofs, you must have operational roofs. If the referendum is unsuccessful, it's not that we can choose to not fix our roofs and fix our parking lots. So that work will need to continue, which is why we were really very specific in limiting the scope of that referendum and asking for the community's support because it is, it is vital that that referendum provide us with some funding for our facility work.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bruno?
Thank you. We're going to take a resolution authorizing the 2021 non-
Mr. Bruno, hang on a second. I'll invite the public to, with any comment or question, to join us at the mic if any wish to do that. Seeing that, Mr. Bruno, we'll have the resolution teed up here for the annual school budget. And then just beyond that is a resolution to endorse the referendum. Mr. Tuskott, I don't have a way to read. Can you just read the header of that resolution? Do you have that? There's also copies out on the table in the back.
Do you want me to read the full resolution for the budget? Okay, so the resolution, so the resolution item is E, is E3? And the resolution of the Board of Education, the Freehold Regional High School District and the County of Monmouth authorizing certain action in connection with proposed school facility projects. That would be E4. That's the referendum. So E3 is the adoption of the budget and E4 is the authorization for certain actions in conjunction with the proposed referendum.
I get a motion to do E3, the annual school budget. A motion to take, approve E3, which is the adoption of the 2021-2022 school budget. Can I have a motion?
Second.
And? Second?
Mr. Parisi.
Second?
Mr. Parisi.
Mr. Parisi?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. Any discussion? Roll call, please. This is Kathy Ello. Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
And now we're going to do the resolution for authorizing the 2021 non-referendum. That is E4. Can I have a motion?
Okay.
Mrs. Higley?
Second.
Mr. Parisi? Any discussion?
I just want to make one comment. I just want to thank our superintendent and Mr. Weiss for the whole hard work that they've done. I've sat in on many financial committee meetings as we've discussed all the different nuances of this referendum and the necessity that we provide the capital necessary to make sure that our roofs are functioning and that our parking lots are safe, as has already been spoken to many times tonight. I don't want to be redundant. I also don't want to be a cheerleader. But our buildings aren't much like, aren't that different than your homes. You know, when you need to do major projects on your homes, oftentimes you don't have that money sitting, you know, under your bed or in your savings account. You don't have this money sitting around. This money is needed for us to make these improvements for our buildings so that our students are coming to a school building that's sufficient for their education. So I just want to thank our administration for their hard work on this.
Anybody else? We're good? Okay, we're going to have roll call, please. This is Kathy Ello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
We do have one board report tonight. That's by hands. Mr. Messinger?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Most of the meeting you guys actually got a look at because it was all about the presentations on the budget and also the referendum. So the architect had spoken to us and Johnny did detail just as he did this evening. So the one issue which we haven't gone over yet tonight is the health insurance issue. So starting on July 1st, we're going to go to self-insurance. It's really the right time and place for this. Health benefits are our second largest expenditure. So this is something that's extremely important. So with self-insurance, we as the employer assume responsibility to pay claims. And we're partnered with a carrier such as Horizon to access their network and they process the claims on our behalf. But this is a measure which will actually save us some tax dollars. If anyone's worried about potential liabilities on catastrophic claims, we do purchase stock loss insurance to protect us in each plan year from any claims that are excessive. And since we have more than 300 employees, we're an ideal candidate for self-insurance because we're considered statistically credible from a claims payment perspective. When you go self-funded, you take out a lot of administrative costs and this is going to reduce how much we have to budget for healthcare each year and allow for more cost containment measures. And this is something our insurance brokers looked at the past five years. But now it makes a lot of financial sense and it allows us to strategize with the broker on setting rates instead of getting them from Horizon. So this is really Freehold Regional taking control of our healthcare costs, but not Freehold Regional getting into the health insurance business. And as I said, stock loss insurance protects us if paid claims for any individual exceed a specific dollar amount. I mean, our biggest risk is if claims go through the roof in the first year, but all the data suggests that that's not going to happen. And as I said, when you have a lot of employees, it enables you to build better statistical models to project what the costs will be. And that basically is what everyone missed at the finance committee.
Thank you. That was a great meeting, April 13th, and the finance committee. And Mr. Weiss and Mrs. Smith and Mr. Lagar, Richard Johnson, Mr. Ozes, Mr. Parisi, Mr. Messinger, we really had a great meeting in my first finance committee that I attended. And I saw the work they put into the referendum, plus we had been added solar. And I can imagine what your office was like the rest of four or five weeks. So thank you.
Your staff and the staff.
Moving along here, we have public participation. Donna? Donna, I'm going to really, I don't want to ruin your last name, so when you come to the mic, can you pronounce it for me? How are you doing, Donna?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Donna Glossy. I'm, I guess I'm trying to shout. So two questions. I'm glad to hear that 60% of our students are back in the regional. Is it possible for us to get a breakdown per school of what the numbers are? Because I think that's important for some parents to understand our current numbers.
Yeah, so the, I'm happy to share them with you after me, but so they vary. I think the lowest is like 51 and the highest is 62. So they're all kind of in that, that range.
Thank you. And the second question I have is moving forward, as I know everyone is ready to guide us from state on how we're going to open September with the medical sections, you know, all those things. But knowing that we're a block schedule, I mean, one of the major concerns schools have had is how we're going to accommodate lunches. And I worry with that with the regional, you know, for next year if that's been thought of and what the plan is, so we can have a full day.
Yeah, so, so our plan is full day September 1, no matter what. And we already have, we already built down schedules to do that. So we were ready to do that this year. The only thing that stopped us is the requirements when you're unmasked and eating to maintain six feet at all times, which when we have more than half our students in the building, it's almost impossible to do safely. But we have, we have, we built out a, we did a couple of things. So we built out a mock schedule with multiple lunches. We built out a mock schedule, eating in certain spaces in the building. And then we ultimately have our regular schedule if all things, you know, go as planned. You know, we're ready to be five days, full day come September. That's the expectation and that's what we're going to push for. One of the things that we keep asking the Department of Ed and the governor staffers, because they're really the ones who are pulling the strings there in terms of what happens is, are you going to get off of the six-foot requirement, the World Health Organization requirement of three feet? Are you going to alleviate that? Does vaccination play a role in that? Because at this point in time, you know, we think it's obvious that schools are safe. All the data supports that, you know? And so here in Freehold Regional High School District, almost 11,000 students, 1,200 staff members, we've had zero issues of transmission this year. I do, I personally believe that we're going to look back one day and deeply regret some of the restrictions that we put in place. But unfortunately, as a school district leader, you know, we follow the rules of what the Department of Alph and what the state lays out for us. And so that's where we are. But from a scheduling perspective, we feel very confident we will be five full days, period.
How are your kids doing, Eric?
My kids are good. They've been back in school since you were, but you know, that was, I was a pleasure on that one. As a mom of senior, it would be nice to get a little direction. I know everyone's up in limbo. I know Freehold Township has had no prom plans released. All the other schools have venues and our kids are feeling a little left out here.
Now, Township has, so they have their plans.
Do you think we could share those because our seniors know nothing?
Yeah, if it's not released yet, it's certainly coming because they have a venue and they're ready to roll. And we felt good about where we were with proms even before the announcement that restrictions were lifted on May 10th. We have venues locked in for all six high schools. We had a Plan B for all six high schools. And so we feel good about where we are with all of that. And I feel confident that your kids at Freehold Township are going to have a pretty normal prom, actually.
On another topic, for graduation, I know your whole goal that we kind of go as close to normal as possible. I know some districts write down Sun National and Trenton. Sounds like less than $10,000, it can accommodate every student and parents because of the space. I mean, there's a lot of options, Mom, the university, so I think high school graduations worth space. I'm just hoping that, you know, we're also like, hopefully we're getting more guidance from the state. You did say that you're planning to open some more things on Monday. New York City is opening, so I'm hoping, you know, New Jersey will too. I just want to keep that like kind of out there that there are options if the high school field can accommodate a graduation.
Yeah, and so we're looking at that and we love listening to the announcements about the announcements to before the announcements come out. But we, again, you know, I think that all of our kids are going to be together on our football fields and parents are going to be there at the perimeter. I feel confident that we're going to, we're going to have a regular graduation. There might be some restrictions there, but not anything like last year.
All right, thank you so much for everything.
I'm like one of the geeks that puts up the New Jersey virus every day. I do morning when I get up. We had a really good eight days.
Yeah, we did.
I think we had the 1,900 pound head.
Yeah.
So.
Reading transmission standards.
Well, I look at it, I actually, I'm very.
I look at it too because it affects schools. That's where I work too. And I want to know what's going on and transmission, like you said, has been nothing. And there's a lot of data to support that. So I think one day we're going to look back and write the same. We had the data, we didn't do much with it. Not us, but of the box.
We're getting there. We're getting there. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to personal negotiations, which is. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to? Come on up. Can you tell your name, please?
Sure. My name's Kristen. My name's Burshon.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I just want to thank everybody's hard work you've been into this year. My kid attends Gold State High School and Dr. Don, who has done a phenomenal job with his administration there, has been very transparent throughout this entire year. I think all in agreement that our kids lost out on tremendous amount of growth. I've watched single-handedly three teenage boys in my house suffer on all levels, socially and emotionally, getting prepared for college. This has been an absolute catastrophe. I'm not expecting AP scores to be looking great this year at all. I am a teacher myself and I just want, I have two questions if you don't mind. One is I'm wondering if the transparency is going to continue and if there's a command outline of what the curriculum changes are going to be as of September, both in the health classes and history classes, if that's going to be easily accessible to us as parents. I've been trying to do some searching and figuring out what those changes are.
So all of our curriculum is usually posted online. We don't, we always put it out there for folks to.
So the new changes that are coming in that New Jersey just adopted, that would be posted online as well.
Okay, is it?
Yeah, we have our youth committees, but then we'll start in one of those summer months. And then we have to run that for our group. Okay.
We always post that.
Okay.
Are you interested in social studies and health?
Right.
Because the state mandated.
Yeah, the state mandated some changes. So I just want to see what that looks like in a breakdown between freshman year through senior year because as we know developmentally, freshmen are quite different in their mindset than seniors are. So I just kind of want to prepare for what's coming out in the next morning because if some topics that are about to be introduced, maybe topics of conversation that have not yet gone on in some households to kids at that young of an age. And I'm just speaking for myself in the community there because I don't want my, I don't want to be blindsided by the incoming freshmen coming in.
Are your kids graduating early?
Oh, yeah, they've been, they've been in, there were two kids in the class. And I spoke to Mr. Curry, Donna, full language. You know, I know everyone was urging bringing the kids back in. We were all also disappointed that there was not five full days of school for obvious reasons. And I agree with the doctors, yes, and people would move back and regret these choices tremendously. So.
Funny, I was going to go, my godson, I break my, he was out of the year. He's had, he wants to have five days. If he can, I'm totally agree. He's a person out there, so.
I teach in Township. I teach in Township and we're at 85.4% attendance. And I think that it's very disappointing that there are 11,000 students in the district. Correct me if I'm wrong, and we're only 10 of us in the audience. I think that parents have allowed children to make their own choices of whether or not they attend school. And I think that that's become a huge detriment as well. So boundaries have been broken. And hopefully my freshman college next year doesn't now come home after three months as a result of this happening. And one other question, this sounds very trivial with the big picture, but we're fighting for these seniors as much as possible. These are monumental moments. You can make up a birthday, you can push off a wedding. You can redo one of the biggest years in your life. Sports banquet's have been completely canceled. Probably only 60 people would be in attendance at a sports banquet with the new discussions this past week. And that we're able to have proms, our sports banquet's able to be put back on the calendar.
Yeah, we'll look at it. The problem is the timing of all that, you know? And so that announcement comes down and it's, those things are planned months ahead. And not, you know, so you can't, you worry about losing money, putting that down, the venues are keeping that. And so I'll talk to building principals and see where we are with any sports banquets, but I wouldn't guarantee anything, only because it's late in the game to make those announcements. You know, the announcements that came out about indoor venues were stuff we've been asking about for months.
Right. And as far as exposure to COVID, what will that look like with prom coming in? I know that there are parents talking about keeping your children home, making it virtual for the 10 days, which is not really an option. You're either five days or you're all virtual. But everyone is running this risk of if we travel as exposed, they would then have to be excused from prom or from graduation.
Yeah, the quarantine rules are. Yeah, they're beyond our scope, yeah. I mean, and individual families and students need to make their own decisions on that. I have a high schooler myself. She's an athlete. I worry every day that I'm going to get a call that she was sitting next to somebody in class and now she's missing her season, you know? And so the quarantine rules supersede us. I mean, we just, you know, we follow them. Moving, the state moving into the yellow has relaxed some of that, you know? So now you don't, you don't, we're, and I sent the letter out today, I'm sure that you got that. We're backing off now that we're in the yellow about some of those quarantine protocols. But we're only able to do that in approximation of what the. But we're only able to do that in approximation of what the state tells us we're allowed to do. So that's a long answer of saying people make their own decisions, and there's chance and there's risk in everything with exposure. And if a child is exposed, then obviously we are going to, we are going to follow the quarantine procedures.
Okay, and just to circle back on the curriculum, sorry to take up so much of your time. Once the curriculum is established and set on as our site, I'm assuming that we require to open first September, parents won't have a say in the curriculum. This was adopted by the state. This is kind of what we do with the New York Public School.
That's correct.
Situation?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comments.
Your role, your face ask for sure.
Mr. Bruno, I would just like to interrupt and say, I've been here 11 years, and I think that might have been the best public comment that I have ever heard from any member of this community in 11 years, particularly your comments about state mandated changes in curriculum. So at least I'm one person here. I'm only speaking for myself. I agree with you a million percent about what is being imposed on our kids by Trenton. And obviously, I agree with you a million percent about the damage that's been done to our children by the government, Trenton. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, good job tonight, I think. Okay, so we're going to go to personnel negotiations, and that's G1 through G21. Can I have a motion to take G1 through G21?
Go move.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Weiss?
Second.
Second?
Capiello?
Any discussion?
Um, I'm sorry. I'd like to throw in my few cents about the retirement of Mr. Uplinger at Marlboro High School because I just want to say after 31 years, I don't think there's a teacher that probably has generated more positive comments from the people in Marlboro about what a spectacular teacher he is. Now, I kind of feel bad because I had two kids go to Marlboro High School, and somehow neither one had Mr. Uplinger. They didn't have Mr. Uplinger. However, by speaking to a lot of kids who went to Marlboro High School, he was one of those teachers that was, you know, cost of being on the Mount Rushmore of Marlboro High School faculty. So I just wanted to take note of his retirement and the sense of loss that the people in Marlboro feel about it.
Also, township has five retirement, and of those, four of them have either been recognized as Teacher of the Year or Support Staff of the Year, and I just wanted to say that they're great teachers and with them, you know, the vaccine support staff people.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. Okay, so personnel negotiations, G1, Mr. Weiss is here, Diane's never ready for a roll call. Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except on G4. I abstain on Michael Capiello, Michelle England, Brian Post, Evi Han, Craig Turner, Row Lord, and Jeremy Raverman.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, on everything except for G4. I abstain for Charles, Dr. Chesky, Debbie Delli, Lori Love, Matthew Redone, Michael Masson, Pastor Graveness, Chris Frogo, Matt Colson, Calvin Scanto, Pete Weeden, Craig Turner, Michelle England, Brian Post, Jeremy Raverman, Joanne Becter, Carol Porcheski, Jennifer Gillette, Angelique Gautier, Adam Versace, Tabri Dow, Michael Mendez, Liam Reckonwolf, Amish Shukso, G6, John Voice, G13, Michael Mendez, and J8, Jennifer Green.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, and on G4, I abstain on Christine Saba and Jessica Howell.
Mr. Bruno? Yes, I vote yes, but I abstain on Stephanie Duff and Doug Marley.
All motions carried.
Moving along here, we are going to do program operations, building, transportation, and physical plant, which is H1 through I4. H1 through I4, that's program operations, building, transportation, and physical plant. I have a motion? Diane, a motion?
There's a motion. Capiello, Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Higley is the second?
Mrs. Higley, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
And the last, I can do the educational programs administration. I need another motion to approve J1 through K2. Motion, please?
Mr. Weiss?
I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley. Discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Just note, Mrs. Higley had abstained earlier on J8.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the old business, members in the old business. I just want to thank everybody, my friends and my colleagues on the board here. Gave me a lot of support when I had COVID, and, you know, it's a chicken soup. I mean, I don't eat the white chicken soup, but I like, they send me so much stuff. But I just want to thank everybody for this support. It was tough, I got to tell you. And I probably was blasé about it, being back to work and things, but when you hit it, it hits. So, but I want to just thank everybody for their support during that four tough weeks. And I think March 27th, I fell asleep and I missed a Zoom meeting. And the next day, I heard from Dr. Sampson, Diane, and Mr. Parisi. You got to start taking this more seriously. And that kind of really kind of woke me up to take the disease and rest a little bit. So thanks, everybody, for the support and, uh, in the business? Diane?
I just wanted to switch my act for a minute and say thank you for the thank you that the district gave to Center State. It really does make a difference when somebody acknowledges something that you've done. It's been really tough for staff this past year, and it brightens our day with a thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Can I jump in?
So, Mr. Parisi, roll call, I'd like to speak to the board's presentation.
No, it's fine. It's fine. First, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Robertman for hosting us tonight. It's been many board meetings at Manalac and High School in the administrative building, and it's nice to finally kind of branch out and be in a new high school. So I want to thank Mr. Robertman and staff for hosting us here tonight. You know, as a Howell rep, it's nice to be home in Howell, Mr. Bruno over here. So this is a...
Nice to be home.
Yeah, this is, this is nice for us, you know, change of venue, and hopefully next year we'll be getting around to all the different high schools that we normally would. As the New Jersey School Board Association representative, we were, we had tentatively planned to have a training tonight, but due to the packed agenda, we decided to put it off. And we're going to set up a training sometime over the summer with our...
No date yet?
No date yet, but we're looking at possibly doing it, but I'll get back to everybody. So this summer time when things come out, we'll try to get the training together with the board members. And I want to acknowledge our new board member, Mrs. Deborah Finelli. She just finished her new board member.
Thank you.
So glad you finished that. I did mine last year. And this year, I was very active with New Jersey School Board Association, and I completed a lot of webinars and trainings online and different stuff. And I please announce to everybody that I completed my 20 credits and I got my new board member certification. And they're going to be having a county meeting on May 13th, actually the same day as our next board meeting, in which they're going to be acknowledging all the different board members that have gotten various certifications. So that's all I have to share, and I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate John Gagagana. He's a wrestling coach here, and he won his 500 dual team win. That's a lot of wins, so congratulations to him. So we're going to move on to adjournment. Does anybody else have a business? Uh, we're going to go on to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Move. Mr. Parisi?
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
I think it was that.
All right.